Was PF Chang's Malibu Bay and La Via condominiums. If you're here, we already approved your stuff, so have a good night.
That was easy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so item. Are we good? Oh, sorry. Item number, oh, we have quasi judicial items. Do we need to, anybody? Need to, we swear, anybody in for these? Do we need to?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If anyone in the audience here is intending to speak on items four, five, six, and seven, now is your time to please stand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Let the record show that everyone has answered in the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The first one is item number four is thirteen hundred North University. Application is ZV two zero two five dash zero 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 one. Minimum parking spaces. You're asking for a variance from down from, from forty eight to twenty three.
Correct.
Excuse me, can you please state your name?
Jennifer Ariel.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, so I don't know if you're familiar with this place. It's where Umberto's used to be for years.
Right.
Okay, so it functioned a long time as it was. Some tenants came in afterwards and-
Excuse me, speaking to the mic, so-
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You can pull it down.
Move it down. There you go.
All right. Some tenants came in and they made some modifications, so it lost its original parking that was there. Now they're requiring it to be brought to the current code, which really is impossible with the square footage of the building, along with the lot. I'm looking to put an Italian restaurant primarily takeout, delivery, and catering, but there will be some foot traffic and dine-in as well. In order to do that, I have to get past the parking hurdle. And of course, with that, I'll come bringing the building, you know, beautifying it.
Great. I'm familiar with it, I think we all are, with that park, particular parking lot. Does any of the members have any questions for-
How long has the, do you, would you know how long that has been empty?
So the previous tenants were forced closed because they did some stuff that wasn't on the up and up, and that was in twenty twenty-three. So I, I was actually looking at the property in twenty twenty-one, because I had a business in Miami to relocate up here, but I missed the opportunity and now I'm back revisiting it, which, of course, a lot of problems that come along with it, hence why I'm here.
Anybody else? Any other members have any questions?
I, I just, to staff, the, the, is it feasible to have the forty, forty, forty-eight parking spots there? I mean, I sort of, is there room for that, or what?
No, there's no room, there's no room for the forty-eight parking spaces, given the improvements that they have to make on the site.
Okay.
So, anybody else? Any other discussion?
How many, how many employees do you have? Will you plan to have?
Probably three.
Three?
Yeah, at one time in the facility. Two of the guys actually cart, like, they get Uber, they don't have licenses, and then another guy cart-foils.
Being that I'm familiar with it, just a little bit of discussion, that the building's been there for a very long time, it's very limited area, very limited parking, so that's about, there's really not a whole lot they can do.
They can do, yeah.
So, anybody else? Okay, so I need a motion to accept that item, ZV two zero two five.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept it.
Okay.
A, B, or C?
A, B, and C, you have to.
Yes, I'm, move to, to accept A, B, and C.
Yep.
No.
Which one?
A, B, or C. A, B, or C.
Have to be A, B, or C, right?
C.
There's no more C.
I'm sorry.
Probably C.
I think C.
Yes, so I will move, I move for C, please.
Okay. And seconded by-
Second.
Member Labatt.
Thank you so much.
Uh-
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on to your parking islands, item, that's item, item five, which is ZV two zero two five dash zero 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 six. The interior parking items, you're asking for a variance to cut down from ten feet to six and a half feet for those-
Correct.
Islands, right? Now, you're talking about the end islands on the, on the-
On the ends of the parking leases.
On the south side of the building?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Do we have, do you guys?
I, I don't have any questions, I, I understand the, the need for it.
Right.
I do want, I understand.
Any discussion, members?
The second was to make the island smaller?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's also due to your parking, right?
Correct. In order to fit the twenty-three spaces, the islands have to be smaller.
Okay. Good. Everybody?
Okay.
Anybody have any questions to ask on this?
No.
Member Zacharias?
No, I haven't.
Okay, favorite. Raise your hand. All right, so hearing and, anybody want to make a motion to accept that, or you're still looking?
Okay. I, I moved that we accept, accept the variance request under section C.
Okay.
A second.
Motion made by member Labatt, seconded by member Zacharias.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, Walmart, I was gonna say Walmart. Yeah, all right.
That's fine, I, like I said, I really only needed to have your spelling correctly in the item.
Yeah. So, this one is. Okay, so this is item number six, Walmart, one hundred and fifty-first, one hundred and fifty-one Southwest one eighty-four Avenue, and application ZV two zero two four dash zero 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 six. They want to change their directional signing, or add directional signing, excuse me, in the parking lot, correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening, for the record, Wesley Hevia, I am land use counsel for Walmart, law offices at thirty-eight hundred Northeast First Avenue, Miami, Florida. Law offices at Northeast First Avenue, Miami, Florida, three three one, three eight. I'm joined by Bill Pfeffer from Bowman Consultants, which is Walmart's design and engineering team down here, and may I proceed with my presentation?
Sorry?
May I proceed with my presentation?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, some of you may recall this application from late last year. We were here before this very board requesting a variance to exceed the permitted number of online pickup and delivery parking spaces, which, which application was approved. And unfortunately, at the time, we didn't realize that if we wanted to add wayfinding sites signage within our parking lot to help folks navigate to those spaces, that that would require a variance. So, we are back to request to add wayfinding signage specifically for signs, which I will show you in just a moment, to the parking lot to help folks navigate to the parking spaces. The specific, I, I do want to clarify for the record, because our, our application materials reference the number of sign, signs, that is not the issue. The issue, as pointed out in the staff report, is to allow signs at all, because the building is visible from the street, we need a variance in order to have these wayfinding signs at all, hence, we are, we are coming before you. So, again, last year, you, we recognize this, this is taken from our, our presentation from last year, the allocation of the online pickup spaces, which was approved. And here's the new request, which is the wayfinding signage. There are four signs proposed. They meet the city's code requirements for sizing, we are not requesting a variance for sizing, simply to allow them at all. Again, this is just best practices, something that Walmart does everywhere to ensure that folks know how to get to the, the online pickup spaces. That, that is essentially the request, we're here to answer any questions, and we, of course, respectfully request your approval.
All right, so you're, it said there's one and a half square feet, so these are going to be pole-mounted, I guess, right?
Yes, sir, we are not requesting any variation from the maximum square footage shown on the slide here.
Just for the sign.
Just to allow the signs at all. Yes, sir.
I, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
To staff, so am I correct in, in assuming that the general consensus is that we do not allow, we do not permit this kind of signage in parking lots? Is that, is, is that the?
No, that's not the case. We do, we do allow those based on the criteria that is upon the additional regulations, because Walmart kind of stands on its own and can be, and is visible from the road, and they're pointing out, they're pointing out directional signs that are just for Walmart only on this particular case, for one particular use, they're coming forward. Normally, if it was in a shopping center type situation, they would have arrows going to different places, but this is singular for Walmart itself.
So, so the objection is that it's, it's, it's for their singular use?
There, there's no objection from staff, but the intent of the directional signs were to take you to multiple places, whereas Walmart is, stands on its own, can be seen from the road. They're talking about a specific use that they have to, to point to a specific function that they're doing on their site.
So, I, I'm not familiar with the shopping plaza at all, so my question is, if I'm driving in there, how would I know where the pickup place is?
And, and so remember, the directional sign code was created before pickup spaces came and, and, and other items like that. So they're trying to get you to a specific place within the center, whereas when the code was created, it was created to get you to Walmart. You don't need to get to Walmart, you don't need all those signs to get to Walmart, because Walmart's so large.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
You're on.
So there's four signs here, so you're gonna, these are just signs, not pickup areas?
That's correct, sir. The pickup area is, there's an existing pickup area, and it will be expanded as per last year's approval, and then this application tonight is simply to add those four signs to the parking lot.
Okay, so, so those four signs are gonna lead to two different pickup areas?
No, sir.
Just the one?
Just one, if I could zoom in again on the pickup area. In fact-
By the gas station?
No, sir, this is within Walmart's parking lot, it's south of the gas station.
Okay.
So here is just the, the pickup area, these, you know, these that are sort of grayed out here, that's the area of the online pickup location.
Those four signs are gonna take the customers to that parking area?
Yes, sir, from various directions within the parking, the larger parking lot.
Okay, well, I thank you.
Good. Anybody else have any, anything to ask?
No.
Input? Anybody out there? All right. Need a motion to accept the, the variance, ZV two zero two four dash two, oh, I'm sorry, ZV two zero two four dash zero 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 six for Walmart. Motion?
I don't have six, I have four and five.
It's, four and five was-
Just, just to clarify, the application number is ZV two zero two five zero 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 four.
I remember six.
The, the number's four.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, mine's.
It's, it's four, right? It's four and five.
No, four and five was-
Not, not, it's the other number here.
The ZV number.
The ZV number is-
I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong number.
Okay.
My mistake, sorry about that. It's got two different, okay.
Remember-
Correction of motion.
I'm sorry, there are two variances on this site, this, on this, tonight for Walmart, ones at, at this location, the other one's at a separate location.
That's the, that's the five, right?
Right.
This one is for the one eighty-four street location, correct?
Hundred eighty-four.
Hundred eighty-four.
Hundred eighty-four.
It's one hundred eighty-fourth and Pines Boulevard. So, okay, so I need a motion to accept IV, uh, variance, ZV two zero two five dash zero 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 four for Walmart at one hundred eighty-fourth and Pines Boulevard.
I still move.
Second letter?
Motion by Labatt, oh, yeah.
I guess C.
Okay. Motion by member Labatt, seconded by member Gonzalez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Motion passed.
Are you also doing the-
Yes, sir, same team for the next item.
Okay, so next item is ZV two zero two five dash zero 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 five Walmart for short-term parking at one hundred and twenty-eighth and Pines Boulevard. That's to add, you want to add twenty-one spaces, correct? You already have ten, and you want to add twenty-one, so for a total of thirty-one?
Yes, sir, and I will elaborate certainly, and for the record, again, Wesley Hevia, land use attorney for Walmart, law offices at thirty-eight hundred Northeast First Avenue, Suite two hundred, Miami, Florida, three three one, three seven, also joined by Bill Pfeffer, who is with Bowman Consultants, who is Walmart's dedicated engineering and, and design team down here in South Florida for all, all of their projects. So, shifting gears now, we just looked at the other Walmart within Pembroke Pines, this is the second Walmart location within Pembroke Pines. You, you know the address, one two eight zero zero Pines Boulevard. Unlike the previous one, this one's tucked into a larger commercial development, it is not a standalone, although Walmart does own this property, it is part of a larger commercial development pattern. And that's important, because I believe we do not need a wayfinding signage variance in the future, so we will not be back, hopefully, for, for that later. But just to, just to clarify the specific variance request here, it is to, to have a total of thirty-one online pickup delivery spaces, which is the same thing that we got approved at the other location last year, we're asking for essentially the same thing at this location this year, and I do need to clarify for the record, because our letter of intent says that there are fourteen existing online pickup spaces at this store, which there are, but according to staff, they brought it to our attention, that there are only ten approved, so there, there are four that, that may not be approved. I just wanted to be completely upfront with that, because our materials do say there are fourteen, and I wanted to clarify that for the record. So that's why we're asking for technically an additional twenty-one online pickup spaces, and the reason for that is because the way that the code, the city zoning code is drafted, this is the framework on your screen for online pickup spaces anywhere in the city. So if you're a building of less than ten thousand square feet, you get three. If you're between ten thousand and twenty thousand, you get up to five, and if you're more than twenty thousand, you get ten. So there's no way to exceed ten by code, no matter how big you are. Of course, we are quite big, this Walmart's about a hundred and thirty-six thousand square foot building, so that is about seven times the catch-all category, and I've placed on this screen, this is, this is our draft, this is not the city's, the red shows that proportionally, we are well within the range of, I think, the spirit and the intent of the code, which is, is proportionality. And that's why we're proposing, well, we'll get into why we're proposing the specific number thirty-one. But again, just to reiterate, this is a large building, it's a, it's a large property, Walmart owns it, it's twenty-two acres. This is not a variance request to, for a parking variance, because we will still provide excess parking at this location, surplus parking beyond what the code requires. So there will be no parking problem here, this is simply to exceed that cap that's in Pembroke Pines' code of ten for anyone, anywhere. And I should also mention, and, and Bill can elaborate on this, but this is consistent with other online pickup, comparable Walmart stores throughout Florida, and obviously there's precedent in Pembroke Pines now as well, at the other Walmart that you just saw, that was approved for a similar number of online pickup spaces. And then, the whole, the whole purpose of this is to, is to meet existing demand and future demand projected out to a certain threshold. And again, Bill can get into how we arrive at the number thirty-one, it's not arbitrary, it's based on data, information, internal reporting, and, and demand, because the whole point of this is to have ideally a few more spaces than you actually need, so that there's never congestion issue, people are never fighting for a space, there's never stacking or backup, so we can continue to provide this service that, quite frankly, since COVID, has become necessary for, for, if not convenient, then necessary for a lot of folks, and, and really with the advent of online technology, online ordering, it's really convenient for folks who, you know, maybe have health issues, maybe don't want to go into the store, and maybe have kids, so it, it just serves a very wide variety of folks, and of course, there's always going to be folks like myself who want to just go in the store and buy off the shelf, but for a lot of people, this has been really great. And obviously, Walmart wants to extend the same level of service that it provides elsewhere in Florida to this particular location and this particular community. This is just the data chart, which, if you have any questions about the numbers, Bill can get into it. Again, this is the site, and this is the specific location, so I've, I'm just going back to the aerial, so you can superimpose to see where it's going. Again, there are already ten existing spots in this location, this would be expanded to thirty-one. Zooming in, you'll see the location, this is really, we have an opportunity to control exactly where this goes, because we own the property, well, we, Walmart owns the property, they have an established operation here, they know how it works, this is best, best scenario, because they can follow best practices. And now I've tilted it ninety degrees, so you can see on the left, the existing online pickup operation, on the right, the expanded, you, you may note that, that the spaces are larger on the right, that is intentional, these online spaces are designed to be essentially the equivalent of handicap accessible, although they're not handicap spaces, they have extra space on each side of, they're, they're wider spaces, so that associates can come and navigate and, you know, deliver products and accomplish their, you know, their, their mission as cleanly and efficiently as possible. So that, that concludes our presentation, I'll just leave this slide on the screen, I did want to give, if, through the chair, I'd love to give Bill the opportunity to explain why thirty-one, if, if, if the board would like that, otherwise, we can just answer questions.
Sure. Does any board members have any questions?
I have a question on the signage, does this location need signs like the one eighty-fourth one? Or is it pretty self-explanatory where they're located?
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll give Bill the opportunity to answer, but I think typically, I think the answer is yes, I think that would be part of a site plan application, and, and we would not need a variance for that, so we wouldn't have to come back to you, but we would work with staff to approve the locations and the number of those signs, and ensure that they meet the sizing requirements. So I think the answer is yes, but it's not at issue today, nor will it be an issue for the board, because there's no variance.
Thank you.
If I may, it's the staff agree, okay, thank you.
Any other member have any other questions?
No, you, you want to?
Good evening, Bill Pfeffer, I'm the Southeast Regional Manager for Bowman Consulting, offices at one three four five zero West Sunrise Boulevard. Bowman represents Walmart all over the country for planning, engineering, traffic, and surveying services, and me and my team here in Florida, we've worked with Walmart across the Southeast on these online pickup delivery projects for going on a decade now. As, in, with this inception, we started with the planning process with Walmart, we've kind of worked through COVID and how the customer experience really changed during COVID, and I want to talk about some of the three, the three key factors that go into how we determine the number of spaces. So, for a site like this, Walmart has national standards that we use, but I want to emphasize the fact that we make it site-specific, because a, a site in South Florida isn't going to operate the same way a site in South, in rural South Georgia does. So even though we have national standards we use, we like to make each, when we're determining the number, we make it site-specific. So the three big factors are the size of the grocery component, sales data, both looking back and then projecting out forward into the future, so we can meet the customer demand, and then the big one is site constraints. Do we have enough parking to accommodate the number that we would really like to see to accommodate this particular operator moving forward? And this, this site checked all the boxes to really, to accommodate thirty-plus parking spaces, which is what we felt we need, and we came up with thirty-one, because that kind of fits within the rows, and just from an operational standpoint, it made sense. So, not rocket science, just kind of using what the customer behaviors are, and then projecting out forward, and making sure we've got enough spaces to accommodate it on the site.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
I do have a question. Is this particular location, is there just a Walmart, or are there any other adjacent businesses there? Is this the old Om Deepo, correct?
Yeah. I believe so. Is all of them, yeah, I believe so, and, and the answer is yes, this is part of a larger commercial park, which includes office and other retail uses. Yes.
So at the current time, do those other businesses utilize those spaces?
No.
That you would use for short-term?
No, sir, Walmart does own this property, and as part of their existing approvals, they're vested with this, they have a parking requirement, but they're also vested with a certain number of spaces that belong to them within the larger development, but specific to their property and their operation, and as indicated previously, and as confirmed by staff in their staff report, this Walmart operates with a current surplus of parking spaces, and will continue to operate with a surplus of parking spaces, even if this application were approved.
So these spaces are now only used by Walmart?
Yes, sir, within the red hash, that is my, that is my understanding, and, and Bowman can correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, that is, that is how these stores are, are entitled and, and operated.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anybody have any, anything else?
No.
Okay, so I need a motion-
Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public?
Oh, sorry, anybody from the public?
Okay.
They already answered our questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I need a motion to accept the variance from, by Walmart for ZV two zero two five dash zero 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 five to allow thirty-one short-term parking spaces at one hundred and twenty-eight hundred Pines Boulevard.
I still move.
Letter?
Letter.
C.
I'll second.
Motion by member Labatt, seconded by member Ely. Am I saying that right?
It's Ely. Ely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
All right. Next up, we have item number eight, RL Carriers for the parking lot. Are they here? Oh, he is, sir, okay, there he is.
Excuse me, sir, before you leave, there is a form, a request to speak form on there, before you leave, will you please print your name neatly so that I spell it correctly in the minutes? Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so this is item number eight, application SP two zero two four zero 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 eight for site plan for RL Carriers for their parking lot, new parking lot, excuse me.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Sebastian Viterino, I, I'm representing Kim Lee Horn, I'm the engineer of record for this project. What I have for you here today is, and, a proposal for an auxiliary parking location on-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, this is a quasi judicial item, do you waive your rights?
Yes.
Thank you.
So what I have for you today here is a proposal for a parking lot for the RNL Carriers on Northwest two oh ninth, just north of Johnson Street. This is on, in the west part of the city, so very close to US twenty-seven, close to the industrial complex. Essentially, it is a two-point-five acre site that will be serving as forty-seven trailer parking spots to help facilitate the operations in the facility across the street that belongs to the RNL Carriers. Essentially, we will be removing all the invasive species and replanting with native drought-resistant plantings, and the parking lot will be fenced, enclosed, and gated for controlled access. As far as drainage, we have ensured to maintain all runoff on-site, as it is right now, with four large retention areas and around two-hundred-and-fifteen feet of exfiltration trench. Overall, there is no proposed building, and there is no anticipated increase in vehicular movement to this facility, as it would just be serving all the movement that is already happening. The peak hours will remain as they are from eight to eleven AM and four to eight PM. The parking lot will be fenced and screened and gated. We will be removing all invasive vegetation that has overtaken that lot and replace it with native drought-resistant species, and there will be no long-term storage, additional equipment, or overnight sort of vehicular trips outside of the already established operating hours. And that is all I have, I'll take any questions.
Are you, are you currently a twenty-four hour facility?
We are, or, or they are, but they mostly operate between these two windows, as that's when deliveries come in and out. They are open at that time, and maybe for unloading or loading, but not particularly active during overnight times.
Okay, and then your, your primary access is from Johnson Street and Tap Street?
Correct, Johnson Street and then up on, on two oh ninth.
Pardon my ignorance, these are tractor-trailer parking spaces?
Yeah, like, like semi-
Like semi trucks?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Is, is this primarily in, commercial areas, industrial, are there any homes?
This is in the Chapel Trail, this is in the Chapel Trail Industrial Park. There are no homes within the, the notice range of this.
A notice range, okay.
So, it's right in the middle of the industrial park. And if you look at the aerial, you'll see it's flanked by, it's flanked by warehouses on each side.
Okay. Yeah, I saw, I just want to make sure those weren't townhouses because I know.
No.
Now, it's going to be used by the company to, to park, basically, they're going to park the trucks there. They're going to be loading there as well?
No.
Loading gets done in the primary property?
Correct, correct. And it, this is mainly going to work as like a temporary parking facility for just ease of maneuverability. Whenever they have particularly busy times, they could move some of the trailers that are not being worked right now over there so that they have ease of access in their facility.
How long, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification also, this is, I know he's calling this a parking lot, but this is really a storage lot for us because you're using it for the trucks. This will not be used for customers to come in and out of. It really is a, and, and that's a kind of a, that's kind of a distinction that I have to make from our planning perspective on how we look at this particular function of this lot.
How long have, has, have they owned this land?
I, I'm not sure, but they owned it before we began development. So, I think that they owned it for quite a while.
Thank you.
Just, just out of curiosity, the boat lot, the boat storage lot, there's a boat and RV storage lot in that area, correct? How far away is it from this? Just so I can get a, standing, is that going to be interfering with that?
I don't even know where that is.
I, I don't have it on the aerial here. I'd have to pull it up, but there's, it's not within a, a decent distance away. I'm, I'm looking, yeah.
Because I'm just wondering if that would create some sort of traffic issues or applications with boats and trucks?
We don't, we don't believe it will. And, and to be honest with you, this area has always been designated as industrial. So, the use itself is, is permitted and is anticipated for this site.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, I think you're talking about the, the one on, off Sheridan Street, I think, right?
It's on Sheridan, okay.
Yeah, that's way up, yeah, that's way up.
No, it's by the, by the Rose Place Park, I think?
Yeah, that's off Sheridan. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Make a motion to accept the site plan and to transmit the site plan to the City Commission for approval. The application ID is SP two zero two four dash zero 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 eight for RL Carriers additional parking lot.
I still move.
Motion, motion by?
Second.
By Member LaBott, seconded by Member Gonzalez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was it for that. And so, one more item we have is, we have the report coming up to present to City, to City Commission at the June Commission meeting and that is in here someplace.
I had it. Mr. Chair, if I can, while, while you guys are going through that, you, in front of you, you should have the report from us. It's very factual as far as how we went about it this year. In past years, we've had some recommendations from this board that have been transmitted to the City Commission based on items that we've discussed over the, you know, over the year. In this case this year, in this case this year, we've really focused, had our focus on processing the applications that are there. I hadn't seen any other recommendations that had been made in this particular year. So, again, if you have any questions regarding the report, which will be given by a member, about Chairman Gonzalez, Chairwoman Gonzalez, excuse me, at the June Board Night Meeting, tonight's the night to, to work on that. And because Chairman Gonzalez, Chairwoman Gonzalez was not here tonight, we'll then take the report, any question, comments that you have, and we'll work through it with her to make sure she's, she's ultimately happy with the, with the product that she brings forward as she'll be reporting to you.
Okay.
To the Commission.
I just have one comment. The, the table that you have in the back of it is really hard to read. And I would just make a suggestion for those of us who, I mean, even with my glasses, I had a lot of time trying to figure it out.
So, what we can do with that is we'll, we'll, we'll put it over two pages. We were trying to get it all on one page because that's how the chart, the chart actually in the code is over two pages. And we were trying to crunch it to get it there. But we'll, we'll make it over two pages then. We'll, we'll correct that and make it a little bit nicer, easier on the eyes.
Can you just briefly give me a, a, any concept of what, what I was trying to read on this? I mean-
So, if you, so if you remember, Member Gonzalez asked, or Chairwoman Gonzalez at the, at the time had asked us to bring back a, a list of all of the applications in which this board sees. Some of the applications that are on there, you, you have not had a chance to see yet. And she wanted to kind of go over those and kind of, and explain which ones go to, which ones stop at you all, which ones go to City Commission.
Okay.
And then, you know, if you had any questions on any of those application types, we can certainly talk about it. Some that we haven't seen in years.
Thank you. I, I just was trying to fathom, understand what was in there. And I, I could read a lot of it, so, thank you.
So, any other questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, so, we just need a motion to accept that, accept the report so we can give it to the City Commission. Anybody?
Just a comment. It's interesting to see like a summary of everything we've done. It's like, oh. So, I, I, I motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Gonzalez to accept it and seconded by Member Alloy.
There you go.
I got it.
You got it.
Just, full of favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Just two quick comments. We will work with Chair Gonzalez regarding the, regarding the, the remainder of the report, just to make sure there's nothing else that, that she feels needs to be in there. That's her prerogative as Chairwoman. She will also be presenting at Board Night in June. If you all could attend to support her, that would be great. If there are any concerns or anything else that you feel you need to, that we need to look at for the following years in order to, you know, any items regarding the land development code or anything that you guys can think of in the future, please bring them to us. There are things that we can highlight next year, or if you're perfectly satisfied with things, or, or if there's amendments that you want us to look at, whatever it is, we're here for you guys. We'll, we'll work with you on it and, and move things forward, hopefully.
What's the date of the-
What is the date of that meeting?
It is the June 5th.
June 5th.
Yeah, it's the first Wednesday.
June, June 5th?
June 4th, June 4th, the first Wednesday.
And, uh-
It will be at the beginning. Oh, and second of all, I just want to thank Chair Goldich tonight. It was his first time as the planning, as the planning zoning board chair here. And kudos, it was, it's, thank you for making our lives easy.
One more, one more item of business, actually, I guess two really. Does anybody have anything to present? Any, any items of discussion?
Nope.
No.
Okay. And then, so our next meeting is, regular meeting's May 8th. The June meeting was moved to June 26th. And there's no meeting in July.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Actually, I couldn't have done that. It's out of order. If it is, I'm not supposed to do it.
Consensus. Motion adjourned at 7/11.